Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, would you please call the board?
Trustee Brewer?
Here.
Trustee Grant?
Here.
Trustee Jones?
Here.
Trustee Tatez?
Trustee Todd?
Here.
And Trustee Zupan?
Here.
I'll accept the motion to go into executive session for discussing the personnel matters. It was moved by Trustee Zupan, seconded by Trustee Jones. Any questions? Madam Clerk, would you please call the board?
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Tatez?
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
And Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Motion is carried. We'll be right back after this. All right, Madam Clerk, would you, uh, I'm sorry, I'll accept the motion to reconvene. It was moved by Trustee Todd, seconded by Trustee Jones. Madam Clerk? Please call the board.
Trustee Brewer?
Here.
Trustee Grant?
Here.
Trustee Jones?
Here.
Trustee Tatez?
Trustee Todd?
Here.
Trustee Zupan?
Here.
Motion carried. All right, next item on the agenda, a motion to approve the amendments. I undertake a motion to approve the revised regular board meeting minutes of August 8th, 2017. I have a motion. Moved by Trustee Todd, seconded by Trustee Jones. Any questions?
Do you have any comment relative to these minutes that's getting ready to be filed?
Is it to this one, to August 8th?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Um, under public comment, on the document that I had, and I could not see the person, however, I know the person named with initials of PC, so I entered her name on there, but I am totally uncertain if it was that person. And I just wanted the board of trustees to know that before we get started.
I'm sorry, which one are you referring to?
August 8th.
On August 8th, on the second page of the public comment, that third point where it has Kathy Pach discussed, or five?
It was Kathy Pach.
Do you want to enter that as a correction? Do you want to enter that as correction? So do you want the motion to say with necessary corrections?
Correct.
Okay, uh, I'll go back to Linda Todd and to our Trustee Jones and enter the motion. Would you like a modified motion with the necessary corrections?
A modified motion with the necessary corrections.
Okay, it was moved and modified, I'm sorry, moved with the modification of Trustee Todd and seconded by Trustee Jones. Any other questions? Madam Clerk?
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Tatez?
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Zupan? Trustee Brewer?
Okay, all right, okay.
I'm trying to, the way I was asked, by alternating your names, just go with me. I can't keep getting me to go backwards. It's okay, but, so, how do you go? Yes or no?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion is carried. I undertake a motion to approve the revised committee meeting minutes for September 5th, 2017. I undertake a motion. It was moved by Trustee Todd, seconded by Trustee Jones. Any questions? Madam Clerk?
Trustee Tatez?
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Zupan?
No.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Public comment, all questions and comments must be directed to the mayor. Each speaker may comment on any matter contained in the business of South Village. Each speaker is allowed one opportunity to speak up for three minutes and may not engage in debate. Please step up to the mic.
Heidi Parker?
You're in the microphone.
Heidi Parker, South Village. There were no copies of the minutes in the bag, and I wonder if the minutes of September 5th have been corrected. I mentioned that in the last public comments. Mr. Richard Greenwood is mentioned in these minutes, and he was not present. I'm wondering if that has been corrected?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, I couldn't hear what you said. Yeah, it has been corrected, but you're right there, and you said there's no... Okay. All right.
Second, I would like to know when the FOIA, Ms. Francis, will be posted website. They have not been updated since July.
Yes?
Rose Ketchum? Mayor, I'd like to know if you check the senior center after every viewing? Because we went in there after the best luncheon, and I took the boarding unit to clean and put the table back right after the best luncheon. That's on Sunday. November 18th, on Saturday, we went by about 7:30 in the morning, and the lights were on in the senior center. We went by about 7:30 in the morning.
On November?
November 18th.
Okay.
Uh, we went by about 7:30 because we're picking up our pad, and the lights were on, so I thought they were cleaning. Later in the afternoon, we went shopping, and they're still on, and still don't turn around. Sunday, when we moved our stadium in, the lights were still on. Not only in the senior center, but also in the women's event. And I would like to know whatever happened with the books that Mr. Clay brought in? They haven't been put in the senior center? And one other thing I'd like to know, one of the bricks, are they coming in? That's all.
Thank you. Uh, the, um, November 11th, for seniors, I'm sorry, for the Veterans Day, is that what you were referring to?
Yes.
Okay, we did, that was brought up last meeting.
Well, I wasn't here.
Okay, and we, it was a dispute back and forth, so, I mean, no, I didn't come in that following Sunday to look and see, but it was a dispute back, well, some people said it was, take care of it, some said it was, so...
No, I came in, and I had a suite of drawers and four tables.
Okay.
Oh, and another thing, we moved the tables from up in the corner. We put them back in the, um, where the TV is, because we're afraid they're gonna fall or slide down. So we put them all back in the light TVs.
Thank you for that, but as I stated, that next meeting has to be 11th. The following Tuesday, it was brought to our attention that something like that had happened, so, like I stated before, it was going back and forth, so hopefully it doesn't happen again. Uh, no, I don't come to everyone, I come here every morning, I'm there every Monday, but for that particular, if you did it that Sunday, it did quite a bit of what you did that Monday. So I don't come on Sunday, and as far as the breaks, we're gonna, I'm gonna find out what happened. And the books, I'm not aware of, maybe the person that's in charge of the seniors could probably give you a little bit more insight on that. Mr. Farmer, I will see him here right now, but I'll find out from him about the books.
Okay, thank you.
Heidi Parker?
Just speak up.
Just a little small concern. Uh, I know that Trustee Tatez is not here tonight, and I was told that he had family concerns and that he didn't show up for the committee today. I wondered, uh, is he all right? Everything good? What's going on with you, if I'm not in right?
That was it?
Yes.
Okay, after the meeting night, I'll explain that to you, but he is okay.
Okay.
Okay, any more questions? That's it, okay. Report some officers, mayors report. Um, the first thing I'd like to do is read the proclamation. This is for December 3rd, which we're gonna be meeting that day, but I'll read the proclamation. Uh, it says, whereas on December 3rd, 2017, March Illinois's 199th birthday, as Illinois became the 21st state in the Union, December 3rd, 1818. And whereas Illinois' bicentennial will be a year-long celebration between December 3rd, 2017 and December 3rd, 2018, which will be our state's 200th birthday. And whereas Illinois' bicentennial will remind us all that every day, Illinois, amazing things are born, built, and grown. And whereas Illinois' bicentennial will honor the many ways that Illinois has influenced American history, achievements, culture, innovations, and more. And whereas Illinois' bicentennial is a once-in-a-lifetime invitation to fall in love with Illinois all over again. And whereas together, we can inspire pride in Illinois and show the world what makes this state so great. And whereas, our community should encourage citizens, organizations, businesses, congregations, and cultural and educational institutions to participate in a year-long celebration by submitting applications for the endorsement of their events and projects by Illinois' bicentennial on the participant page at illinois200.com. And therefore, be resolved that South Village endorses the efforts of the Illinois' bicentennial and encourage all citizens to participate in celebrating the upcoming year by visiting illinois200.com and using hashtag Illinois Proud. Now, therefore, I dare urge the mayor of South Village to hereby proclaim December 3rd, 2018, as Illinois' bicentennial, 2017, as Illinois' bicentennial day in the village of South Village. Uh, your copy will be on record. Uh, we did get a flag from that, and it will be, it'll be, uh, displayed in the, uh, we haven't decided yet, because we've only got one flag, so we're trying to see which is the best area we can do it. Uh, but we will be displaying the bicentennial flag, I don't know if we have room here or at the police station, but I think it's gonna be the police station that will be displayed, but there's a flag. But it's something that I don't wanna put out every single day, because it won't last the year. So we can bring it out, bring it back in. Also, um, I want to officially ask the board and ask for a motion to appoint Ms. Judy Sutcliffe as treasurer.
So moved.
It was moved by Trustee Zupan, seconded by Trustee Jones. Madam Clerk, would you please call the board? Sorry, are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Let me understand something. I thought last week that we, not last week, week before, that you had appointed her and, uh...
I did for a 30-day period, but it wasn't on the agenda, so therefore it's on the agenda now. So I would like formally to do it, so I can swear her in. Any other questions? Madam Clerk?
Trustee Todd?
No.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
No.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Tatez?
Motion is carried. Madam Clerk, would you please, Ms. Sutcliffe, would you please come forward?
I, Judith Pierce Sutcliffe?
I, Judith Pierce Sutcliffe?
Having been appointed to the office of village treasurer?
Having been appointed to the office of village treasurer?
In the village of South Village?
In the village of South Village.
In the counties of Cook and Will County?
In the counties of Cook and Will County.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois?
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties?
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of village treasurer?
Of the office of village treasurer.
To the desk?
Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a few things that I want to bring to you guys' attention. Uh, the first one, I'd like to give you an update on where we are with the recodification. After it was approved that we would move forward with the recodification of our ordinances, um, our zoning board informed us that the zoning in the current ordinance manual and the timeline was not accurate, and had, the numbers did not coincide with the ones that we actually operate from here in the village, so we communicated with them, we shared with them the zoning code, and asked them for a price, and they provided us the price. Know that we're not asking to just happen, I'm just giving you an update, okay? So I don't want anyone to collapse on us. But the total estimate to do both would be $11,322. Initially, we had allocated the $7,000 and something for it. Um, so I know that I cannot make that determination, however, I need to bring it to you so that you can make that determination. With this last correspondence that was sent, the price that she had, that they had provided to us before, which was the $7,652 for everything, it has now been changed, and the price, if we were to only go with the ordinances, as we had talked about, will now be $7,547. So it's not that much, but it's a little less. So I'm not certain if it, I don't think that it requires a vote, I'm just giving an update. Unless you want to go with including the zoning code, then we can bring that back to vote another time. If not, then you're just notified.
You can put that on the agenda, but maybe in the whole way.
That sounds good. Um, someone mentioned an update on FOIAs, and I know sometimes we're here and other times we're not, but FOIA requests and the responses are now, there's posted outside on the board out there, as well as I give a report monthly. What is on the website will not be the actual documents that were submitted in response to the FOIA. We're just letting you know who the requestor is and if we responded, and I'll give you the date. The first FOIA that we received since the last report in October, we received one October the 10th, that was from the Attorney General Public Access Coordinator, and that was a request for review of 14 FOIAs submitted by Trustee Brewer. It was referred to Mayor Burgess, he responded through United States Postal Service. The status is pending, because we've not heard back from their office. On October the 11th, we received another FOIA request from Trustee Brewer, and the request at that time was a report of drug seizure funds. That was referred to Mohan, and that was responded to on 10/12, so we consider that closed. On 10/12, we received a FOIA from Trustee Brewer, and she was requesting data from this water building from May 2016 to 9/2017, and that request was denied, simply because we do not have that data, and according to FOIA, we do not have to recreate a report, so that was denied. On October 31st, we received one from Attorney Patrick Welch. He wanted employment contracts executed between Chief Kowalski and the village. That was referred to HR and was responded to 7th, November 7th. On 11/1, we received a request from Heidi Parker. She wanted the names and amounts of the two settlement agreements that had been discussed previously. I handled that one through email, and that case is closed. On 11/6, we received a request from Willie Robinson, and he wanted a listing of all village employees, stock titles and salaries, a listing of new village employees, mayors assistants, and new supervisors. That was referred to HR and responded to November 15th. That case is closed. On November the 8th, Trustee Brewer requested all commercial insurance policies. That was responded to on November the 20th through email. That particular response was in excess of 300 pages, and generally, the mayor has put out a memo as of today that we will follow FOIA regulations for everyone, whether they are the public or within, that if a request or response totals more than 50, that we will be charged 15 cents per page, and each side constitutes separate pages. And that same will apply even if we send it through email transmission. On November the 9th, we received a request from Michelle Armin. She asked for all bank statements from CNN from September 2017 to the current, and that was submitted November the 13th, it's closed. On November the 20th, Trustee Brewer asked us for all of the invoices from Republic Services from November 2015 to July 2016. That is pending, uh, on, also on November the 20th, Trustee Brewer requested documents from Cook County that show overpayment of property taxes, the date and amount of overpayment, verbal or written documents that show repayment schedules and the balance owed. That one is pending as well. On November 20th, again, Trustee Brewer submitted another request, asking for all invoices on behalf of Dr. Srotter, her salary, and she also requested a handbook. That one is pending as well. And then on November 27th, Trustee Brewer requested receipt registers detailed balance reports for the period of May 1st, 2007 to the present. That was referred to Director Mohan, and that case is pending as well. That completes FOIAs for the past month. In your packet, you received that?
I've got a question.
You have a question for her?
Yes. You indicated on 11/6, somebody asked about a question, a FOIA request for employees. I'll refer to HR also on, uh, 11/9, the CNN, uh, 11/20, I think that was the... But those two FOIA requests, we have responded, so can I get a copy?
We'll talk about that offline, but I'm certain that you can, but that's not necessarily something that needs to go forth right this year, okay?
No, I'm asking, well, Julie, I asked verbally, and I put it right, so I'm asking verbally now.
Yes, Trustee, you may get a copy of that.
Thank you very much.
Isn't that another question?
Hold on just a second. When you, we're gonna, we're gonna do this the right way. Um, if you wanna ask a question, no problem, but we need to get clarification from the chair first before we ask questions, so we're just not gonna start just asking questions. No problem with asking questions, but we're gonna do it the right way, you can ask, you know, get recognized first, and then we can ask a question. So, Trustee Zupan?
Yes, sorry, Mayor. My question was, is it that request of Trustee Brewer is yet another FOIA request by virtue of her wanting copies of other people's FOIA information?
I will not consider it as a FOIA request, I would just provide that information. Know that whenever I can provide the information, I would rather just freely give it, rather than to be labored with people having to FOIA and responding to FOIAs. I don't have a problem with sharing, I just thought that it was, I thought we could've talked about it tomorrow.
Well, I guess my concern comes in, sorry, going back in first order. My concern would be, if we get into that threshold, we're gonna be charged for anything with more than 10 pages. And I don't know how many pages these other requests are, but, you know, if there's a charge, we encounter them, you know?
Mike?
If any of these other FOIAs were in excess of 50 pages, then, and those folks had to pay for the additional pages, then I would expect any one of us who also wanted that same information would also have to pay the 15 cents a page for the excess pages, that's all.
Yes, so that's something that, you know, um, this, that memo from the mayor just came out today, so I think that we are going to have to establish a policy so that it is consistent across the boards, and I thank you for bringing that.
And I thought there was an ordinance, actually, that you might wanna check, that there was something in an ordinance previously approved some years back about... that there was something in an ordinance previously approved some years back about FOIA information.
I got another question.
Excuse me, again, we still have to come through the chair.
Question, Mr. Mayor?
Okay.
Okay. To get copies of FOIA requests that's already been out there, okay? Do you have, or can I get a copy of whatever regulations you guys are following that shows that you have to be charged for electronic, uh, disposition of FOIA requests? You know, that you sent to a requester, you know, that request to. Can I get a copy that regulation or something that shows that you spent more than two hours on that particular FOIA and that you're charging us 15 cents a page?
I'm not sure.
Uh, just like the, or copy of the regulation, you know, that covers this. So, you know, when they ask, I'll be able to provide them with that information.
Uh, the process will be, and I know this, this is according to statutes of employment FOIA. If I receive a request that totals more than 50, then I am to write you a letter letting you know that it is over 50 pages. I will state the particular statute that it refers to and then let you know how much your overage will cost you. And then after payment is made to the village, then I will release the requested information. That, that is the process for that system. And that is according to statutes of FOIA. As I stated, when I write you the letter, once you go over, then you will be able to see it and you will be able to reference it. But then also know that I have provided so much information from when I've gone to conferences that deals with FOIAs, OMA and all of that. So I'm going to just invite you to look at your materials that have been provided by me because the information is there. Thank you.
Do you, is that, that end your report? Is this end your report? Okay, there's something.
I know, I know. And I just wanna go real quick. There's one other piece relative to minutes that I put in the packet, but for the sake of time, I'm not going to go over that today relative to minutes. But as I said, I'm constantly providing information as a learning tool so that we can move forward. I do want to just say that we got a piece of correspondence from Brickover, Georgia High School, addressed to you, Mayor. Thanking you for your willingness to help students and families. And know that, you know, investing in their students is a major, major accomplishment. They greatly appreciate it and they just say thank you for all you do for our students. You are part of their lives too. I thought that was nice. And that, one last thing, and that's Christmas to you. That information is on the back table. I'm hoping that everyone will come and support at least one family, if not two. And anyone that would like to come and help, gift wrap some of the boxes or do you wanna come on the 15 to help stuff the boxes? You're more than welcome to do so, just give me a call. That really completes my report.
Thank you.
Question, Mayor?
Yes.
Would you please share the source of this?
Yes, uh, when we first, when we were first elected and you weren't on board with us at that time, but Olson and Sturke had us at their office and they gave us a few hour in-service. And this is one of the handouts that we received there.
Village Engineer, Mr. Jim Zarni.
Thank you, Mayor, no report.
Treasurer's Report, Ms. Julie Sump. Reports from staff from the apartment heads, from staff in finance and administration, Director Mohan Raab.
Yesterday, myself and Mayor and the treasurer met for the audit regarding the FOIAs 2016 and 17. Um, the auditors are going to send us the final draft of the audit pretty soon once we have audit reviewed and it could be filed in the night controller after the last tip reporting is done for 2016-17. The collectors and financial report for October 2017 will be available either on December 4th or December 5th at the earliest. Now, so I have a request to the mayor and the board. We received a late billing from Comcast towards our internet that comes to us in July and September of '13 due because we did not get the bill on time. And we got the shut-off notice this morning. The total dollar amount that is due is $5,317.68. I would request that Mayor and the board please approve the payment so that they can include it in this payment. As, as there is one request from Chief of Police regarding... There are four offices that are, they are going for the emergency medical services training. Uh, they're gonna get, we are gonna get two freebies for the price of board. Uh, a, a $200 of, uh, hand check needs to be, I mean, $200 check needs to be approved to be paid tomorrow so that the chief can send four offices for the training.
So you're asking for, uh, $5,317.68 to be voted out from Comcast? And how much for the?
$200.
That's it, there's $200 for?
$200 for peak and training services.
So that'll be $5,500 each day now.
Yes, sir. If any further explanation is needed for the $200, chief can provide the information.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to ask, have this motion, uh, now while the chief is here, does it need a question?
Well, I just, I have a question. So Comcast doesn't shut off notice today for, for a bill for $5,000 for July and August?
July and Septem-
July and September.
We did not get the bill.
So they didn't send it to us until?
No.
Mayor, can I just make a comment?
Sure.
So that sounds to me like we don't have any control in place to say, we're expecting a bill from Comcast every month, where is it?
Normally, the bills come to either Public Works Department or... But I, I have no clue about this one. We got, uh, other bills except, uh, May and Sep-, I mean, July and September.
I'm just, I mean, to her point, you know, every month, you know, you get a light bill, a gas bill, a water bill. So just because you didn't get a bill in the mail, doesn't mean that you don't pay the bill or follow up on it.
For some reason, we didn't get the bill, that's all I guess.
Okay, um, the board heard the pleasure of the financial records. Uh, I'll entertain a motion to pay the amount of $5,517.68, $5,317 is for the Comcast has due and $200 for the police to go through their, uh, seminar. I'll entertain a motion. I got a question. Just a second, just a second, we have a question.
I'll second it.
Okay. It was moved by Trustee Todd, seconded by Trustee Zupan. Question. Okay, going.
Going forward, how do we prevent this from happening again? I mean, we all know, I mean, your cardinal comes, you know, it's coming every month. If they don't send it to me in the mail, that don't mean I got a free month. So who's tracking what and why this wasn't tracked? Um, someone is accountable to make sure that the bills are being paid. And if that bill didn't come in, hello Comcast? Yeah, I need a bill. It's just that simple. And I wanna know who's accountable for that and why we didn't get that phone, make that phone call. Nobody.
All I can say is I did find out about it today. And it was brought to my attention today. And it was dated back, and I don't know where it was sitting and where it's been. And that's why I brought it to the board. And it does say on the bill that if it's not paid for by tomorrow, the Comcast services in this building is shut off. So that's why I brought it to the board. I asked the same question, virtually got the same answer. And it was not discovered until today. So that's why I brought it to the board. But all in all, if we don't pay that bill, then we'll be shut off.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
That's not acceptable.
I didn't say it was. I'm just saying what I, what I saw.
I mean, that can't happen. I mean, I understand, I mean, I don't know the severity of that, but this could have even been. If, I, I don't know who's in charge of paying bills. I mean, I mean, I'm just, I'm just saying.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, would it be best to just revise this? Would it be best to just amend this, the accounts payable instead?
You said, would it be best to amend it?
Add the $5,000, you know, have the total.
I mean, we could do that either way. The reason why I'm doing it now because, uh, they may have had some questions for, for, for the $200. That's the only reason why I'm doing it now. If the, uh, police chief is not here, can't answer those questions. If they had any questions, obviously there's no questions for that. That's why I asked to have a vote on that and not be part of the, uh, accounts payable, not to be in there. But it is part of something that has to be paid. There's a bill that's due and, uh, I can just, I don't think, like I said, I saw it today. And instead of going through all the process, I asked to have it. And I wanted it to be put on, uh, not put off, but discussed here at the board where we have four boys that are doing a consensus again. So there's a motion on the floor.
Mr. Mayor, I do have one question, um, regarding the Comcast amounts. Of that $5,317.68, is that strictly our charges for the two months? Or is there a late fee in there? And if so, how much is the late fee?
There is no late fee? All right, um, any other questions?
Well, how do you not have a late fee if the bill's from July? This is November.
I saw the bill and I didn't see a late fee on it, I just saw the amount. So I'm, um, I'm thinking that there's a late fee built there because it wasn't itemized, it showed the actual amount that's due and it gets stated, if it wasn't paid by the date, they would shut it off. But I didn't see it itemized, itemization.
Mr. Mayor, one last comment. I'd like to see the Finance Director come up with, A, a control to ensure that we know which invoices or bills we should be receiving on a periodic basis and how we know that we're getting them timely. That's for those things we're getting monthly, quarterly, yearly. And I'd like to see that before the next board meeting, if possible.
Okay. I'm sure Trustee Ramsey will work along with that. Any other questions?
Are we just voting on this particular, I'm sorry?
Right now, this is...
This particular?
We're voting on the motion for to pay $5,517.68. And the part of it is Comcast will pick the $317 and the other part is $20 for, um, so, so pretty obvious.
Mr. Mayor, I got a quick question. I heard you say, um, Mr. Raab, that a bill comes here, but a bill goes to public works?
The Comcast sometimes that goes to public works.
Why? Is there a reason for that?
Like, what's the address?
It's supposed to come here?
Like, should, should it come to the address that's on the bill? So 21801, shouldn't this be where it comes?
It should be, yes.
Can you give the vote? Um, the bill's off, I'm going to vote off.
Oh, okay.
No, it is dispersed in the mail.
Can I hear you?
Oh, I see what she said.
Can you see it? Can I hear you?
You said that in the mailroom, it doesn't come to public works in the mailroom and maybe it disperses in his box. And that's, that's the only thing, but you're right, it doesn't come to public, public works. Any other questions?
Got a comment, Mr. Mayor? When we first started back in May, uh, one of my requests that I made is that you provide, well, whoever provides us a list of vendors and their due dates. At that time, you told us that, um, there's no way we could go through and get all that. So now we're getting that information because that, uh, since, uh, Trustee Zupan has put it out there again. So now we're gonna get a list of vendors and when they're supposed to pay and the due date. Are we gonna get that soon?
I mean...
That's what I asked for.
Well, okay, well, let me rephrase that then. I'm asking for those vendors that we have to pay continuously every month and their due dates and how much is generally due. You know what, uh, bills that are due every month, we would like to know so we could be looking for the payment, uh, if it's not on accounts payable. That would help us as trustees know what money's going out, what hasn't been spent, what should be spent. So I'm asking for a list of vendors. Okay, a list of vendors and their due date and generally how much it costs.
Okay, um, trustee, first of all, there's not gonna be a generation of all bills going to the trustee. That's, I've seen part of that and that's...
I'm not asking for, um, all bills. No, I said the list of vendors.
Same thing, all bills. That's a list of vendors, the bill, the vendor.
The name of the vendors and how much we're supposed to pay them. That has nothing to do with the invoice.
We still have a motion on the floor. Let me take care of the motion first. And afterwards, during your part, we can talk about that. But right now, we have a motion on the floor. Any other questions pertaining to the motion on the floor? Ask a question, please, however.
Jesse Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Snay.
Trustee Reagan?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
No.
Trustee Case?
Motion's carried. Um, Madam, uh, Trustee Brewer, after the, again, I cannot, I'm not gonna take up everybody's time or back and forth discussing how the bills and who can see. Anybody can come in and ask to see the bills. But as I stated before, any trustee can come by and ask. But if it's going to cost two or three hours worth of time, then you have to set aside an appointment. Because I'm not gonna have them take two or three hours out of their day like that unless there is an appointment. But there's no problem with you seeing what bill that has to be paid. And you're right, the ones that are on the, um, I mean, the ones that are on the accounts payable are not, nowhere near the bills that we have. So that shouldn't be a problem. And then, um, we'll go from there. Fire Department, um...
Are we finished with, uh, I would like to ask, uh, Finance Director Mohan a question before he leaves.
Sure.
Uh, you, on the accounts payable for media checks, you have a William Marlowe on here reimbursing it for a media check. What is that for?
A toll refund that was ordered by the Circuit, Circuit Court of the County.
Circuit Court?
Yep.
So they ordered us to pay him $5,000 for some reason?
Yes.
And the Popeyes chicken that was for village days?
That's for the veterans' day lunch.
Okay. Uh, also, there's a change in the Republic Service on page one. I think that went up again.
It went up to-
God, she reached one up. Okay. Also, um, we get in this station, our person will, we all have to. That's, that's all I have.
Fire Department report will be read by Chief Kowalski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, trustees. Fire Department responded to seventeen calls, seventeen calls, six fire alarms, one odor investigation, one vehicle fire, one stove explosion, one vehicle accident, two gas leaks, two still alarms, one ambulance PD assist, one car in the pod. That's one car in the pod. And one picture of fire. That's the end of this report.
Okay. Thank you. Now your report, Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, trustees. Uh, just a couple of observations. That $500 that trustee, uh, that was a return of their original fine that we, so the village was not out any money. That individual's vehicle was towed to get their vehicle out. They had to pay $500. They paid the $500 and they contested it in court. The court ordered that we returned their $500. So the village is out no money.
So that's a toll fee.
That was a toll fee, correct. Okay? In reference to the $200 and thank you, uh, Beacon Training, uh, is conducting, uh, training for emergency first responders through the South Suburban Emergency Response Team. And since they're using our facility to, to conduct the training, they gave us three, or two free spots and $50 per officer for this training. That's a emergency, uh, tech, uh, emergency medical technician training. And I felt that this was definitely worthwhile to have at least two officers per shift to have this type of training. Uh, it focuses on if an officer is injured while in the line of duty, uh, somebody could respond, uh, immediately in addressing whatever wounds, uh, they received. So I definitely thank for $50 per officer and two free. That's a pretty good deal. Now, back to my report. For the last two weeks, we responded to 486 calls for service with seven arrests. Uh, and please note a few cases of interest. On November 12th, officers responded to a report of a shooting victim in the area of the businesses located at Sock Trail and Jeffrey. Victim was taken to St. Margaret's Hospital, but, uh, due to the severity of the gunshot wound, was transported to Stroger Hospital. An offender was identified by witnesses and evidence was collected by our detectives, who continue to work on that investigation. Uh, on November 22nd, officers received, received the call of shots fired in the 22100 block in Talantis. Upon arriving, officers located the offenders, took them into custody and recovered a handgun. Victim could not be found at that time, but the shooter was found to be in possession of a weapon. Detectives were investigating that matter and pursuing felony charges on all the subjects. Then on, uh, November 24th, officers responded to a shooting on the 21900 block of Clyde, where they found two victims with gunshot wounds. Both were taken to St. Margaret, St. Margaret's Hospital with non-life threatening wounds. While at the, uh, at the hospital, officers received another call for another gunshot victim from the same area. Victim was transported to St. Margaret's, then airlifted to Stroger Hospital for more serious wounds. Our detective at the time was on call already activated by the South Suburban Major Cramps Task Force for homicide which occurred in Park Forest. Our shooting is now an active investigation. And, uh, just, you never want to hear about any type of shootings in our town. But there's a correlation between all three of those and that's why I bring them to your attention today. So it's just not random people shooting at each other. Uh, there's, there's definitely a connection with all, all of those shootings. And due to the severity and the nature of this, I will not discuss any further, but thank you. Uh, the Sock Village Police Department has recently created, on a nicer note, uh, the Sock Village Police Department has a Facebook page now. The social media will be used to make announcements and provide information that's useful to residents of the village. I realize that there was a Sock Village Police Department, uh, Facebook page before, but as this one gets more use, this one will be the one that pops up first. Uh, email, I recently set up an anonymous email for Sock Village citizens. So if you wish to email the police department with any type of information, you could do so by emailing. And it's a pretty simple one. It's sockvillagepd, uh, one word, at gmail dot com. Again, it's sockvillagepd@gmail dot com. I'm the only one that has access to this email, so this information will stay confidential unless you want it released. Lastly, uh, the Sock Village Police Department has set up a GoFundMe page to help fund this year's shop or the cop program. We have collected, uh, quite a bit of money so far and I appreciate all of, uh, everyone who has donated. If you're interested in helping, please go to the GoFundMe page. It's G-O-F-U-N-D-M-E website. And when you go to it, you just put in Sock Village and it'll pop up. It'll have our, it'll have a gold star and you can donate that, that way. We're still working on, uh, a date with the schools, so you can still donate at this time. Uh, I will, uh, work with the village clerk to let you know when the cutoff date is. And that's the end of my report.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Just a quick comment for everyone's benefit. So you know, uh, several months back, we had some snacks and pop and water out back. And then we continued to have water and snacks available to the employees in, back here. And as a result of that, we, uh, did just give the chief $60 tonight as the proceeds of, of that endeavor. So I just want to make sure everybody do that. Thank you.
That, that was, uh, a great help. And that was with the, also with the help of National Night Out. And we, we had somebody here today, uh, actually several people today give us donations. So I want to thank everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Emergency Management Agency Director Alvin Vabry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Board. In addition to the, uh, Fire Department calls, we also assisted the Illinois State Police on a major accident at 394 in Langwood, Dyer Road. Um, and we also had a disabled vehicle. Just a reminder, folks, when there is an emergency vehicle, red, blue lights, fire truck, anything blocking the roadway, please, please show the kindness and the respect to abide by what is being said. Make sure that you know that the road is blocked off, so, uh, there's no confrontations. Uh, other than that, that's all I have, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Public Works Director Kevin Wellis.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Few items here. Um, work is completed, uh, at 1681 223rd Street. And we did a water main upgrade and valve, 36 feet of water main and a brand new valve. Uh, this will help us shut off the water between the, the west side of town, the, uh, yeah, west side of town and, uh, under the roadway. Heartburn liberated and more repairs and for future repairs for the roadwork underneath the highway, for the water main of the highway. Um, final season cuttings, uh, will be final in the next week. Um, since the leaf drop is over with, we'll be able to go around to all public buildings and get our leaves picked up from there for final pickup. So staff will be out as long as weather is permitted. Um, over the last week, we had a diesel pump problem. Uh, Fire Department showed up at the, uh, public works. Our diesel pump had a, um, leak on the pump. Uh, we didn't have any spill. It was contained in the containment underneath it. Pump was repaired and put back into service. So we're okay. Um, repairs to the street light at, uh, 22301 in Brookwood, they were completed about a week ago. And ComEd has had the power cut back on over there. Uh, both lights are both on and working fine. No residential complaints. Um, residents had till November 19th to rig all these piles in the street. Uh, I understand right now there are lots of these piles being break down. Um, I hope that they're gonna take them away. They can call the George Hall and they're gonna be told to, uh, to rake them up and put them in yard waste bags and be picked up by the scavenger. Um, if not, then I believe that Sherry might send Sue out and either give warnings or tickets at that point. Uh, but just so residents know, any piles they do not pick up in front of their house will end up in a neighbor's yard and they will call about that, I guarantee. Um, at this point right now, due to the leaf program being over, we did send the sweeper out behind the, the leaf program, so the streets have been pretty much cleaned off. Um, so staff will be out doing power patching and repairs. Uh, this will be for the, the winter here that's not here yet, but we're okay with this mild weather so far. Um, also, we had, uh, two heaters in our wellhouse that went down. One in our, uh, main station and one in our well three. These heaters are located in our chlorine rooms. Um, at this point, we haven't had admission with cold weather, but, uh, in the chlorine rooms, they tend to corrode a little bit more because we do get a little bit of off gas of chlorine and certain metal objects, and they do corrode. So occasionally they have to be taken down and cleaned out internally. Um, both were taken down and they're both working in there, so we should be okay. Um, our next, uh, step after the leaf program, every year we start setting up for the Christmas, uh, season here. We start putting our, um, decorations up and pulling our Christmas tree down. And I did speak to, uh, trustee Jones about, uh, dropping off the trailers so they can get the prepared for the parade. And last, um, we were given a list from, uh, Sherry of 15 homes that were, uh, not occupied with no water accounts. Of those 15 homes, we found four that were still on or turned back on. We did shut those off and the rest of the list was, uh, given to Sherry for updates. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Kevin. Our Community Development, Sherry Jazinski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Code Enforcement has 199 tickets on December 6th court call. Um, a letter went out to IDOT in regards to see James Auto, um, on the building for repair or demo. I'll, uh, continue to follow up with the attorneys on this. Um, it looks like, um, they're requesting them to do the repairs. And if they fail to do that, the village can, um, remove the building. I don't know financially if we have the means to do that, but that's what the letter says. I'll follow up with the attorneys in a few weeks to see if they've heard any, um, response from IDOT. And I'll keep you posted. And Kevin, thanks for getting, uh, back to me with those houses. Those are the 15 houses that we still have squatters in. Um, I turned that over to the police chief and Kevin on November 11th, I think, or 15th. And, um, Kevin gave me his list back. So they're all shut off now, so that's a good move forward. Uh, that concludes my report.
Okay. Before I go to the next one, I still want to get a status. Uh, someone give me a status between now and the end of the week of, uh, hometown hero so we can find out if that's gonna be taken care of before the end of the year.
I just got a call from Will and Winters, uh, yesterday. As a matter of fact, I forgot to mention it today. So they're anticipating taking that down within the next week or two. So I, I asked them to make sure I get a couple of days in advance so we can get the dumpster there. So that's, that's, um, the, that's on their list of things to do.
Thank you. Okay, Community Development Director, Mr. Joseph Wizwora.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the board. As I reported at our last board meeting, uh, I've been working with, uh, Chicago Metropolitan Agency on planning, uh, to work out the request for proposals for the village's comprehensive plan. The RFP was delayed, but for a good reason. Uh, we're working to enhance the scope of the project with a significant extra stormwater, uh, component funded through the CBPG. Uh, we are waiting, uh, details and clarification to help us with the composition of the scope. Uh, we should have the work complete by the end of the week. Sock Village is among a handful of new consultant-led projects being scoped first. Our project was highlighted by CMAP to some 50 consultants who gathered for a presentation of new local technical assistance projects, which we expect to be competitively bid to consultants. The preview was an effective way to whet their appetite and meant to look very eager. Over the course of the last several weeks, I've been working to evaluate the current business license process and the current business license holders. This is being done to make a recommendation for the business license flow and new application process. I'll be working with Community Development Director Sherry Jazinski reconciling our recommendations and having this information to the ordinance review committee for their review after the holidays. It is our hope that the village board can act on the recommendations in February in time for the business license renewals. Um, finally, uh, we'll be having a joint enterprise zone board meeting later this week. Um, members of the board, I did put some information with respect to a neighboring community, um, in our, in Tyler. That's, uh, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Reports of committees and commissions? Beautification Committee Chairman Linda Todd.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, beautification is going to decorate the hall on December 2nd at 9:00 AM. So if we're not doing anything, we can use your help. That concludes my report.
Um, I just want to add something before you guys get away. I just wanted to kind of let everyone know, um, it's, and she's very modest. She didn't say anything. But there's a new tree that's gonna be, um, put out in the hallway. It's a nine-foot, um, fir, boston fir tree. It's maybe about seven feet wide. It's gonna be huge. But it was donated by our very own trustee Linda Todd. Like I said, she's very modest, so when you see that tree, you see how big it is. It's gonna take at least two to three hours to decorate that particular tree because it is huge. So every time you walk by, you can see that one of the trustees actually donated it. And I really appreciate it. But that's first, that's the first I ever, ever known of to have a trustee that someone actually did that. So you're very, I'm, I'm here. I know you're looking down, we wanna, we wanna take a now, but I have to. I have to announce.
But if you have extra ornaments, we could really use it. I don't have any money left.
Um, okay, Senior Advisory Council, I would say Mr. Farmer here. So we'll move on to reports of trustees.
Uh, the next, uh, meeting for the Senior Advisory Council will be November, I mean, December 14th at 5:00. And also, we have, um, um, Mrs. Stan, uh, Dr. Stan Barry coming by and three other groups that want to join in the senior center. So anybody who wants to come by and give suggestions and take a look at what we're doing. And also, we started up a newsletter, uh, so come on by December 14th at 5:00. And, uh, because I can get that report.
Okay. Reports of trustees and committees, Public Service Committee, trustee Bernice Grohl.
Okay, for the Public Service Committee, I'm, uh, uh, the first half of the, um, recommendations that, uh, the group, um, is, is going to submit is, um, has everything to do with historical data. So what I want to do, I think it's about eight pages of what's been going on, like the water consumption and, uh, water main breaks and all that sort of stuff. Uh, I'd like to pass that on to Kevin. I'll give you a copy and he's gonna review it and then we're gonna sit down and talk. I, uh, we feel that it's good to give, uh, whoever's looking at this, a background of what's been happening with the water since, uh, uh, 2012. So that'll be ready, uh, end of December. So, uh, another thing is that, uh, getting the, um, counts for, uh, to determine the increase in the water rates has been sort of difficult because, uh, every time I go in and ask for these numbers, it seems like it's always an issue. So I haven't been able to get the, um, counts of, the actual counts of the water users or the garbage bill or anything like that. So, um, I'm asking again for that information, which is public information. How many people? We're billing every month and, uh, I can't seem to get it. Now, I also have been talking to a couple of mayors, one from, uh, Mayor Gonzalez and also Matt Dermott from Hammond. And they sent a letter back in 2010 indicating they were interested in, uh, supplying, uh, Sock Village with water and they're still interested, but they want a letter saying that we're going towards that and we're not gonna stall. But once we start, they want to stall. You know, they want us to keep going. And also, I, I referred to them that we need the allocation for Lake Michigan. We need to fix our infrastructure. So those are the things that they're keeping in mind when they, uh, when they're gonna update the information. I gave you a draft copy of, uh, the letter. And it also refers to the 2010, uh, letter, memos that they sent. And also, I got that information from Jim Sernack and he also suggested that I send, that we send, um, And also, I got that information from Jim Sernack and he also suggested that I send, that we send a request for them to upgrade it because it's going to upgrade the cost because it's going to take them a while just to evaluate how much it's going to cost. And they also needed the consumption numbers, how much water we're using each month for the last three years. So that's one reason why I needed those numbers. But those are all the things I'm working on. So once I get all that information, we're good to go. And that's the end of my report.
Okay, trustee, with your answer for it, you say, can you give me a copy and I'll make sure that you can try to make sure that you get those questions answered?
Copies of what?
Of what you requested for water.
Oh, I already got everything I told you, I got from Kevin. The numbers I got, Mohan.
That's what I'm saying, but you get, did you get it to me too so I can make sure that, you know, that even, I don't know if it fell through the cracks or whatever, but I need to get you a copy and I'll make sure that.
Mr. Mayor, I had sent up, I don't know how many four requests asking for the same information. Do you want it again? I'll, I'll send it, no, I'm sorry, no, I'm, I'm sorry, I'll send it again requesting that information.
Thank you. I just, that's what I'm trying to avoid. Budget and finance committee trustee Roger Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Budget finance committee will be meeting tomorrow here at seven PM. There was not a meeting in October, so we hopefully tomorrow's meeting will be able to pick up where we left off and finish up the financial procedures so that we can present it as soon as possible to the board. And before we do that, I would still would like for the new treasurer to take a look at it as well and give her thoughts and inputs along with Mohan. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Parks and Rec trustee Calvin Dow.
This Saturday, well, I did mention to the chief last week about utilizing the police station, one of their bays, to start decorating the slate for Santa.
Fire station.
At the fire station, yeah. This Saturday at ten o'clock, I'll just have to touch bases with him again, a reminder. And this Sunday, we'll be decorating the community center starting at one o'clock. Santa Parade is the ninth. Starting at ten, the parade starts at ten, going around block to block through the whole community. The party starts around three in community center. If you all didn't see the flyer for the basketball, after school basketball from three to six, Monday, Wednesday and Friday. That's been pretty good, pretty successful, getting maybe thirty, twenty-five, thirty kids a day over there. That's been a pretty good turnout and should be a flyer back there, if not, I'll have to put some more back there. And there should be flyers for the Christmas parade. And that concludes my report.
Thank you.
Trustee Jones, when you're doing the Christmas parade, can you please go through Weatherstone? When they do the truck run? Can you go through Weatherstone? We obviously do for that.
I talked, I talked it over with them, I don't know if there was an issue or not, or not, but I wasn't sure if they didn't go over there. But I'll definitely bring it up to them.
We got kids too.
Okay.
Community ordinance review committee trustee Linda Todd.
The next meeting is going to be this Thursday, November thirtieth, six thirty PM here at Villachaw. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Public safety trustee Elizabeth Zupan, Beth Zupan.
The next public safety meeting will be next Wednesday, December sixth, six PM here at Villachaw. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Finished business, the, we've had, we've had plenty of times, we've done it numerous times. So I would like to, at this point, entertain a motion to adopt the resolution for the two thousand, supposedly two thousand seventeen strategic plan. That's this one here that everyone knows. And I'll entertain a motion for that.
Second.
It was moved by trustee Grant and seconded by trustee Jones, any questions?
Question? I just want a little clarification on, this is good, I mean, I agree. And looking forward to working on it, working with it. And if there's any, as we go through this, like you say, we're meeting time to time and we'll update and bring up forward any changes of anything. If there's any monetary changes or is this by us, vote on this now? Is that blanking it? Or are we going to have to go back each and every, each time if we decide we want to make specific changes?
This is basically a blue, a blueprint. And so there's never nothing cut in stone, even the, even the constitution as a member. So this is just giving the village a blueprint of what and how we're going to move forward with it there, absolutely. If there's something that we get to and at that particular time, things may have changed in the village. And if they have, then yes, we can update it, but this is something that we need to put in place so we can have a blueprint to move, to, to move forward and that's basically what this is.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Madam Burris?
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Tate? Trustee Todd?
No.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Bruber?
Yes.
Trustee Brian?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carried. New business, I'll entertain a motion for a council payable to revise one in the amount of three hundred and twenty-two thousand, one hundred and six dollars and eight cents.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, you have to use the new number, three hundred and eighteen thousand.
Oh, I'm sorry. Three hundred and eighteen thousand, four hundred and twenty-four dollars and fifty-eight cents. Thank you, trustee.
Second.
It was moved by trustee Zupan, seconded by trustee Grant, any question?
Question, Mr. Mayor? On page one, we've got, well, we have one, two, three, four entries for HR consultant and all of them over a thousand bucks and the last one's over four thousand. And one of my many four requests, I asked for a copy of the Owens Group. And now, the information I got does not include a HR consultant, yet HR consultant's on here. I don't understand again why this is still on here. I have asked many times to provide me with a binder that shows the specific that addressed HR consultants. What was sent to me did not include HR consultant, so I don't understand why we're paying. And who are we paying for this HR consultant? Because Dr. Alicia Stroud, Alicia Stroud is here again on page one, eight fifty for that. She's on page two, eight fifty for that. So you said that she's under professional services, but the eight, again, the package that was sent to me said we don't, it does not include professional services, but she's under here. So is she a Saw Village employee, what you said she's not? So when did she come on board as a consultant? And, you know, what is her hourly rate? And how long is she supposed to be here, all that sort of stuff? I don't know, I don't know if anybody else know. That's something I've been trying to get in the four requests. So I'd just like to know perfectly, what is her standing here? What is her employment agreement? How much is she getting paid? I would like to know that. That's something we need to know off the money.
Mary?
Oh, no. So I request that we take her on so we get this map straightened out because I really don't know. And Joe, our project, we had a nice conversation today. Also, we had on here for the economic, economic, he's a visiting person, he has a business expense report. When did that come about? Maybe I'll look at, he has an expense report on here of a hundred and seventy-four dollars and thirty cents. I don't recall doing that, maybe, I don't know, but when did he start, he get expenses, um, for that? And another thing is that we ask for us to be notified when we have immediate checks. Now, this William Marlowe, I understand he's supposed to be reimbursed, but I never got an email saying that he should have been reimbursed, which, which is fine. We knew it was coming, so I don't understand why he couldn't be on a payroll, just like, I mean, on a council payable, just like, why did we have to cut him immediate check? And another thing is with Popeyes, we knew that was there was coming, why did we have to cut immediate checks? I understand that. We have to pay, but there's no reason for immediate checks. But my biggest concern is that, oh, wait, I have one more. For Republican Services, one of my many four requests, I have asked for invoices for Republicans to find out. If you guys recall, we owe over three hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars to Republic for some reason. I've been trying to find out why do we owe that? And I'm asking for copies of the invoice so I can do my own analysis. For some reason, you guys don't want to give it to me, I'd like to know why. So all these things relates to finance and that's what we're supposed to be doing, looking at the money, especially for Republic. I have requested those invoices two or three times, you know, and now they have to state it, turn out, that's wasting public money, wasting taxpayers' money. When the information is there, they can give it to us. And then I got to look at it, I said, well, okay, I don't see anything, you know, we do owe this, we underdo it. And I think we run into the same situation we were three years ago because of not mistaken, the current bills, we owe, they're overcharging us. I can't prove it without the numbers from Mohan, which I have been trying to get since I've been here. That's, that's it for.
Okay, now, I'm going to go back to number one. Owens Group, in the budget, you saw HR, forty-eight thousand a year. So that part was, you asked this question several times.
Yep.
And that's where, that we're using the Owens Group vendor, another word, their vendor, and we're using Dr. Stroud as HR from them. There's no contract, we're using that service from the HR, I'm sorry, from Owens Group. Second, the, as you can see, again, with Dr. Stroud, HR services coming out of the police department as professional services. We're starting negotiations now for the, for the police contract. So she's doing that in, in, not extra, but in addition. So that's something she's doing and it's being done because we have to start. Last year and every other year that we've had contracts, we had our lawyers to start doing that work at double the amount. She's getting eighty-five dollars an hour for a, for a consultant, for, for the, um, negotiation, as you can see, it's for negotiations and, and issues, starting with the police department, it's, it's from the professional services. We were paying one sixty-five an hour when we had the lawyers do it. So yes, we have to get started, the contract is, is going to be a lengthy contract, it's going to be a lot of changes, so that's to be started early. But to say that you never knew about the HR, it's in the budget now. And it's, and it's also itemized in the budget. And then also, you're talking about the garbage. Let me, let me explain that to you. Last year, I recall, oh, that was here last year, I recall, you recall, I don't know if you were coming to the meeting. There was a new contract that was ratified by, at that time, the board. I was against it, but it raised the rates for the next fourteen years for every resident here for their garbage. With that contract, it was stated that they will forgive the three hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars that we owe them because it was a miscommunication between the village at that time and Republic. So there was a miscommunication, either we didn't send out notices of increases and they didn't purge the houses that should have been purged and not taken care of. So they came up with this agreement. I asked to have it done a different way, but the board voted against it and devoted to, to increase everybody's garbage three percent for the next fourteen years. How can we get out of that contract? I really don't know, but it's going to, it would cost a whole lot of money because I was asked, can we pay half now and half? Because we still have four years left on the contract that we had at the time. So we have four years to come up with money, but it didn't happen, they did that. So all we can do now is deal with it unless we feel we have enough money to try to change it. I don't see how that's going to happen because now we're going to lose money for the next fourteen years raising. So they have a contract with the village for fourteen years to pick out a job. Can we go out and, and get somebody else? Yes, but it's going to cost you. Is it worth it? I don't know yet, I haven't tried to do that. So that's three hundred thousand, three hundred and thirty-six dollars, I think it's more than that, but that's funny. It's, pardon me?
Three eighty-nine.
Okay, well, that's three eighty-nine. But if you read the contract, I don't know if you got a copy of it at the time, but you can get a copy of the contract, it states. And I'm going to say it's real slow so you can, everybody can understand it. I'm going to say it real slow. That if we do not pay in ninety days, that three hundred and ninety thousand dollars that you were talking about comes due to Republic and they still pick up our garbage.
Okay.
That's on the contract. So I just wanted to, to, we're not going to go back and forth, but those are the things I'm trying to explain what you had asked about and.
Wait, wait a minute now, um.
We're not going, we're not going, we're not going.
We're not going back and forth, but, um.
That's what you're doing.
No, I'm not.
Because I haven't got a chance to finish the last one yet.
I'll, I'll get to it. Go on.
No, I mean, do you, trustee, do you have, okay, that's why I asked you, were you through? If you were through, then I'll try to explain the William, five hundred dollars and the Popeye chicken about the immediate checks. Those are the last two things you had asked about. I was going to try to spend, once I do that, we're going to move on with this meeting. The Popeye's chicken wanted their money. They couldn't wait until our board meeting. And if you notice, we didn't have a board, we didn't have a meeting after, after that because we, Thanksgiving came. So we didn't have a chance to do that, so that's what happened with that. And Mr. Marlowe came to the village hall. He paid his obligation. He wanted his money like now, he couldn't wait for the next board meeting. And this was last week, so that's why he got his immediate check.
Mr. Mayor? The head, I appreciate the explanation you're stating, but it still does not explain why I can't get the invoices I can look over Republicans' account. I understand that we owe them money, but I'm saying we are running into the same kind of problem that we had three years ago. And my intentions is to let you know that something's not right the way, the way we're, we're, um, being billed. I know for a fact that Sherri sends out a monthly, um, billing to, a monthly list of vacancies to the garbage people where they should be adjusting the bill every month. Every month, we get one consistent bill with the same numbers. This town has people moving out in it every, every month or so. Republican, the information provided to me does not show any adjustments to the bills at all. Something's wrong with that picture. Secondly, uh, back in, when we owed this three hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars, I was told that it was looked over, the invoices were looked over. I can't get a copy, I like to look at the bills, that's something we owe. We have to go back and pay it again, that's not fair to residents. There's no reason why I can't get at the bills and take a look at them. It's public information, why can't I look at the bills?
What bills are you talking about?
The invoices, I'm sorry, the invoices, the Republic invoices, what they demand payment.
Well, how would that tell you if we're behind? How would that tell you that the bill?
I'm trying to come up with three hundred and.
I'm asking you a question, how would that invoice tell you who was not billeding or who didn't get billed? How would that invoice?
The invoice only shows a dollar amount.
Yes, it does.
Okay, and it would tells me, along with what Mohan is giving, it tells me how much we paid.
Yes.
So if we haven't paid them enough money. So if we haven't paid them a mu, enough money, what they requested, you know, that means that we underbill. But if they overpay, you know, overbuild us and that means that...
How would you know they overbilled?
By looking at their invoice.
How would, the invoice would not tell you we overbilled. If they overbuild us, the invoice would not, they billed us accordingly. How would the invoice tell if we overbilled?
They're not building us accordingly. They, they're building us, they set, they set price of houses they build, they, they not building us according, they don't reconcile anything. Even though Sherry sends the information to them, they don't delete or add anything. Because from the previous invoices, let's see, I have some invoices, I don't have all of them.
Trust me, how do you know? Because what you're talking about is day-to-day operations. And how would you know that if they're not building correctly? How would you know that?
Because if Sherry sends...
Unless you have anybody built in front of you, how would you know that?
If Sherry sends the length of, the number of people that we are building and then the number vacant houses, then, um, Republicans send us the bills according to the number they sent in. They sending us one set every month and they shouldn't have it.
Okay, um, I, I, I got a suggestion. I'll be here every day. What you're asking for, like I asked you for, come to my office and we can sit down and go over what you're asking, become back and forth, now everyone doesn't have to sit here and listen to it. Let's go back and forth. We can, we can go, we can sit down. I'm sorry, let's, I'll let you guys speak. Okay, we had a chance to speak your public comment. I'm just, you know, just, I'm just hoping that we can get the meeting done correctly. So we're not going, I'm not going to do our first. Thank you. But when I'm saying this, trustee, if you can, come and we can sit down and I can try to get things, um, pulled. But in order for you to know how much a person owes, you have to see what they were charged, what they were billed.
I didn't say it individually, I said...
Well, that's the only way you can find out if they were overcharged or undercharged. That's the only way you can find that out. Showing an invoice does not tell you if the client, which in this case would be the resident, is underbilled or overbilled. There's no way to tell that by the invoice. You have to go through bill by bill to see it, and then you have to actually sit down and, 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 uh, go over the bills to make sure that they were billed correctly. You can't do it with the invoice. Like I said, we could, we, I'm here, we can sit down and do that instead of going through the other factors, uh, for you. We can do it this way. So I'm not going to go back and forth anymore. We can, I'm offering, we give you time when you want to. Let me know when you're coming and I'll block that time out and we can, we can, we can go from there.
I'll be here tomorrow. At what time is your business?
What time?
At, at twelve, at, um...
Okay.
Okay, and, uh, Mr. Mayor? No, no, Mr. Mayor, you indicated on here, you got, he got meeting, is that what you said?
I didn't say anything, I'm asking you. I didn't write.
No, he asked questions.
Right, but where it's dissolved into does not deal with...
I'm, I'm trying, I'm, I'm, did this question you ever asked me, is it... The question that you're asking me, does it have anything to do with the accounts payable which you're...
Yes.
What, uh, could I ask you? At the end of your talking, is that, was that it? And you said yes?
I'm, I'm asking for clarification.
I said, I asked you, was you, was you, uh, through asking questions, you said yes?
I didn't through ask a question, I want clarification or something, you said.
Go ahead, Ma.
Okay. The, uh, you indicated that Dr. Stroud is, is being paid eighty-five dollars an hour. When did we get that information?
Okay, is that, is that your question?
Yeah, I mean, I'm just going by what you, you said.
All right, because you said you've done research, I'm sure you've done that research.
No, because you, I can't get a copy of the contract.
You'll get a copy of everything you asked for tomorrow.
Okay.
Any more questions on regards to accounts payable? Madam Burris, please call the robe.
Trustee Brewer?
No.
Trustee Tate?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Tate? Trustee Tha?
Yes.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Motion's carried. General topics, uh, from the board and trustees, we'll start with, um, trustee Tha.
Nothing with this time, thank you.
Trustee Brewer?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, um, I appreciate... Yeah, I said, Mr. Mayor, I, okay. I appreciate you inviting me out to, um, um, get copies of what I need in order to get my work done. Uh, however, uh, you have said, come to your office before and you also said, come and ask Mohan. Uh, Mohan, as soon as you get there, he can't respond and, and when I come to see you, you know, you always being, we are always being interrupted. So tomorrow when I come and ask for all these things, uh, we won't have that problem, right?
I can't promise that. I cannot promise that I won't be interrupted. Now, that part I can tell you because if there's something that happens and I have to, I can't sit and tell you that we can have two hours because that doesn't happen with me here every day.
Okay.
But I will make sure that we can, can get things out.
Okay, I'd like to let you know that I'm there and I'm here every day. I pull my own information, you know, diet, I mean, just, just to let you know, just to keep the employees, you know, so they won't think that it'd overwhelm them. I pull all my information myself, look through file myself, all that can be directly. And I'm faithful to that.
That's your comment?
Yeah, it's my comment. And I appreciate that, I'm taking mine.
Trustee Joe?
December seventh is, um, Parks and Rec's committee meeting, settled by, you know, the Village Hall.
Trustee Zupan? Trustee Grant?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to, uh, just say that, you know, the, the bill from Comcast was, you know, caught us all off guard, I'm, I'm sure. I'm hoping that, I mean, that's something that probably shouldn't happen. I can understand, you know, possibly one, maybe slipping through the cracks, but two, you know, two months, that's, that's a little, uh, excessive. I'm hoping that with the new treasurer that comes aboard that, you know, she can help out, uh, Mohan as much as possible to catch some of these, uh, these drop balls and hopefully she can alleviate some pressure that's on him, whatever that may be. Um, I'm glad to see that we have somebody, uh, here, um, to help out, so I look forward to working with her. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to say, um, um, I hope everyone had a great Thanksgiving. I, I don't really have much left to say. I, I kept you guys that long enough for, for that, but I'm, I'm just hoping that as far as the Comcast, um, trustee, uh, Grant, uh, that's why I brought to the board tonight rather than try to get a, because some things need to be brought out. Because I was kind of, um, didn't understand a lot of things also, so, uh, that's what the board is here for, to, uh, to vote the money in and out, so, and I appreciate you guys, uh, paying the bills. With that being said, I accept the motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. We need to hear everyone. Do what you're going to do.
What can you do?